Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Oak Hill Community School. Mike Revard, Principal. Welcome, Mike. Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Jett, and members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to spend time with you tonight, sharing some amazing things that are happening at Oak Hill Community School, and we want to welcome you to our community. Oak Hill is a pre-K through 5th grade school, with our current enrollment being about 685 students in grades K through 5. Oak Hill is a diverse school, with 52% of our students being students of color, and 25% of our students being EL students. These are the largest percentages of students in Oak Hill's 37-year history having those characteristics. 56% of our students are free or reduced lunch. Oak Hill is a community school, with families and community members volunteering, tending to our environment, coming to our events, being part of our school each day, and we are excited about the changes that are happening at Oak Hill. Today, I would like to share with you some of the things our wonderful staff is doing to try and inspire and engage our students to be successful lifelong learners in this ever-changing community and society. I will start with a quick review of our test scores from the 2016-17 school year, and then update you on the student's growth that is occurring in 2017-18. Our MCA test scores from 2016-17 included the following: our overall school proficiency rate in reading grew from 59% to 62%, and in math, our overall proficiency rate grew from 61 to 63%. For growth in the MCAs this year, or for growth in the MCAs in 2017, in math, 59% of our students had medium-to-high growth, which is a 6% increase from the year before. In reading, 61% of our students had this level of growth of medium-to-high, which was a 10% increase from the year before. At this point in the 2017-18 school year, we have seen some exciting data to share with you tonight. We, as a staff, have sought to measure how Oak Hill students are doing to catch up and close the achievement gap that we're seeing. With our MCA rates in the 60s for our percent proficient, we recognize that many of our students need to grow at a faster rate. Therefore, we are now examining STAR data much differently, and looking for a year-and-a-half growth of, uh, growth for our students, what we're calling accelerated growth now. Utilizing this STAR data to monitor accelerated growth, this year, we've seen 57% of our students in grades 1 through 5 grow a year-and-a-half in accelerated reading, or in reading for accelerated growth. And while in math, we see that 45% of our students are making this type of accelerated growth, which is very exciting to us this school year. How are we trying to accomplish this? Prior to the school year beginning, we, as an Oak Hill leadership team, recognized and chose professional development activities in a schedule that was rigorous for our veteran staff. We began our school year by learning and reflecting on how identity and equity play a key role in our overall instruction. We continued with training on responsive classroom, in order to ensure that all of our classrooms were creating a culture where our environment and our students were ready for learning each day. Then, from October through January, we went deep into math professional development, with our district teaching and learning department stressing the implementation of number talks, and working to improve across many different math strands what needed to happen across all the grade levels at Oak Hill. In reading, we have joined with other schools in the district in implementing co-teaching. This instructional model is designed to address the needs of Oak Hill in an inclusive classroom by having general ed teachers and our EL teachers or interventionists teaching together in the same classroom, to meet the needs of each individual child. With excellent professional development this year, and coordinated planning time that's occurring between our co-teachers and our regular classroom teachers, we see this making much more improvements for our children in reading, and we will need to continue to assess the implementation of this new model for us. While we continue to improve our instruction in reading, math, social studies, and science, Oak Hill still each year delivers music, visual arts, and physical education experience that fosters our students' creative talents, challenges their athletic abilities, and emphasizes physical fitness. Our students enjoy music and FIED two to four times a week, and at this point in the school year, we know that 30% of our 5th graders are beginning their orchestra experience as they prepare for South and Tech. Oak Hill students attend art class at least once each week, and we continue to expand the visual arts to meet standards, from knowledge of the elements of visual arts, to using tools and materials, comparing and contrasting visual arts, examining the cultural and historical context of the visual arts, and of course, presenting our students' work. The pictures that you're seeing above here are paintings that our students have painted themselves, and these are on our walls at Oak Hill. At Oak Hill, though, we believe in our district's core values that everyone deserves equitable access to the highest quality of learning to maximize individual potential. We have implemented our talent development and accelerated services model to impact individual students and help each grow. We do this through academic achievement, high achievement placement, and school-wide Our academic achievement efforts target grades 3 through 5. We have Knowledge Bowl, Geography Bee, Spelling Bee, and the United States Academic Triathlon. At this point in the school year, 160 students have participated in one or more of these Our Spelling Bee winner this year was Samara Med. We are very proud of Samara in representing Oak Hill at the district-wide Spelling Bee. Enrichment at Oak Hill also includes science and field trips, which provide hands-on, authentic learning, meant to stimulate and enhance the love of science, writing, and creativity. We are completing our second year of total school cluster grouping. This model allows for an equitable access to needs-oriented programming to meet the emotional, academic, and social needs of each student. Our model is accessible to grades 2 through 5. Instruction is delivered by our differentiation specialists and classroom teachers, both of whom receive training for teaching high-achieving learners. Through our school-wide enrichment program, all students are able to experience high-level thinking and highly engaging learning experiences. Our three main goals are to develop the talents of all children, provide a wide range of advanced enrichment experiences for all students, and provide advanced follow-up opportunities for students to allow them to continue to develop their strengths. As you can see, many of our school-wide enrichment activities have been with all students assessing activities in science, engineering, and robotics. Looking ahead, in our talent development and accelerated services programming at Oak Hill, teachers are continuously seeking ways to redefine learning with the enhancement of technology, finding creative ways to have students interact with technology, empower students into the future. We are very excited to implement more engineering into our school, and thanks to the help of LEAF, we will be able to implement mobile STEM carts to provide for flexible storage and movement of our robotics and engineering equipment at Oak Hill. This will help promote collaboration, creativity, embed critical thinking skills within our own curriculum. At Oak Hill, though, we recognize that respect for others and the self has an enormous impact on our school culture and academic achievement. In October, we celebrated Bully Prevention Month. All of our Oak Hill students were introduced to the Bully Prevention Curriculum and asked to voice their commitment to being bully-free. Our 2nd grade students marched through our hallways and led us in singing the anti-bullying song, which I will not sing with you tonight, to solidify our commitment on Unity Day. Students and staff lined the hallways and sidewalks to watch these eight-year-olds lead us in support of prevention of bullying. And as you can see from our picture, we choose kindness at Oak Hill. Understanding that Oak Hill's mission is to address the needs of the whole student, we strive to foster resiliency and emotional well-being with all of our students. We know that when our students can identify the emotional state that they are in, they are more able to engage in problem-solving and in learning. We have introduced yoga calm techniques to our students to help with this effort. So far this school year, we have had over 2,700 visits in the student support room, and the vast majority of these visits represent approximately 30 students who receive proactive breaks during the day and social skills lessons. Our monthly PBIS assemblies are designed to reinforce the students and classrooms that are working to follow our matrix of respect for self, respect for others, and respect for the environment. Teachers and UA specialists select those students each month to exemplify positive behaviors in our role models for their peers. Parents are called in advance so that they can attend. Some parents will come and go all out and bring flowers for their children to signify the pride that they have on their kids. Additionally, for our whole classrooms, we distribute all awards for those who demonstrate growth and following our PBIS matrix. To make sure all of these efforts we have talked about today will come together, Oak Hill partners with our parents and our community members to ensure that we're achieving our mission of preparing today's learners for tomorrow's challenges. We have family Muck Fund Nights throughout the year that further inspires our students to go deeper into their academic programming, while bringing in parents to engage, to join their children, as active members of our community. This year, three of our evening fundraisers have been Book Bingo. We have seen between 100 to 150 family members, community members, staff, PTSA, joining me for two hours of bingo on Friday nights. Now, while I enjoy calling bingo as one of those other duties as assigned by Superintendent Jett, it is a student's smiles when they win and choose a book, and have that special time on a Friday night at Oak Hill that makes it special to be a principal there. Our Veterans Day assembly and celebration is an annual event that brings in community and family members on a very special day for our nation. Our students lead the Veterans Day celebration in honoring them. They also color flags and write thank-you cards for our veterans at the VA Hospital and Care Center. On a personal note, though, this is an incredibly moving event to me as a veteran, but more importantly, as a leader of elementary kids, I find this to be an incredible opportunity to have our community members come into the school, see the greatness of the students that we have, see the future of our community, in a way that makes them all feel proud. During December, we host our Oak Hill Avid Career Day. Twelve Oak Hill community members, ranging from parents to uncles to grandparents, come to speak to our 4th and 5th graders about various careers, including, we had a physician, a surgeon, an educational activist, a philanthropist, a database administrator, an engineer, a construction project manager, financial planners, armed service members, and this year, a district court judge joined us. Each student had the opportunity to take a career inventory prior to this date to help determine which career day speakers would best suit their current career interests. In the end of the day, the only complaint that we heard from parents and students was that they wished they could have attended more sessions. Each year in the spring, the Oak Hill community also comes together to help maintain our prairie by having our annual Prairie Burn. This brings Oak Hill students, staff, and parents, community members, and as you can see, our backdoor neighbors, join us to help continue to restore and preserve our native grassland plants. The real-life experience allows for an abundance of learning in our own backyard. With so many great things happening at Oak Hill Community School, I'd be remiss in not mentioning a few more celebrations. Oak Hill has been implementing PBIS strategies for 10 years, and continuing our motto of respect for self, others, and the environment. For the past five years, we've been recognized as a PBIS exemplar school by the Minnesota Department of Education. This past October, Oak Hill staff and students celebrated our school being recognized by the Minneapolis Star Tribune as one of 45 schools in the state to beat the odds due to our performance on the MCAs. This newspaper award acknowledges distinction to those students who meet or exceed the predicted success on the MCAs in reading, math, or both areas. We're very proud of our Oak Hill students. At Oak Hill Community School, we strive to engage and inspire our students each and every day. We are a family. We take care of each other, and we partner with our community and with our parents. We know that what we do will impact beyond our lifetimes. We are Oak Hill. At this time, we'd like to present this year's Oak Hill Proud video, so bear with me if I can make that work. Welcome to Oak Hill Community School. Our motto of respect for self, others, and the environment challenges us every day to inspire and engage all of our learners. Oak Hill is located on 40 acres of beautiful land, where we utilize the outdoors and our classrooms to provide collaborative activities for our children. We also place special emphasis on science, technology, engineering, math, and language arts as we prepare our students.
We do lots of engaging activities, working with phonics, and words, and letters, and spelling, and it is really a fun way to watch that progression as they move forward.
We like to engage students in learning with lots of movement, a lot of opportunities to use their voice, collaboration with others, to create great music, and to have a lot of fun while they're doing it.
Through talent development, I have the opportunity to work with some of our school's high-achieving members and to provide them an opportunity to really be engaged in higher-level thinking skills, being able to collaborate, communicate with each other, work together, and be creative, to inspire them to be lifelong learners.
Typical day, physical education class. Students are engaged from the minute they walk into class to the minute they leave. They're engaged in different activities every day. Uniquely, they're, they get to take part in today, cross-country skiing, sledding. They're also exposed to biking, rollerblading, and have an opportunity for open gym.
Our students really enjoy the contact classrooms. They get to listen to teachers sharing their stories. They see us thinking aloud and doing a lot of modeling. Our classes, our classrooms are energetic. Our students are having fun. They're engaged, and they're just really excited to learn.
I have been always impressed by the way that they can inspire children, regardless of their academic talents or their learning styles, and how they are so engaged and so excited within the classrooms.
Seeing them experiencing something for the first time, or realizing that they can actually read and write, it brings great joy for me. Knowing that I have three kids of my own, it's been a very easy decision to not only live in the area of Oak Hill Elementary School, but also send my boys to Oak Hill.
At Oak Hill, teachers really work hard to inspire their young learners. Think about providing engaging activities that will help them grow in their academic, social, emotional needs. For academics, we have lots of rigor, but they're still learning with hands-on activities that just really keep them engaged and excited about learning.
Throughout this school year, we schedule different learning walk opportunities for teachers, where they can join another classroom and observe what's happening in the classroom next door, the classroom down the hall at a different grade level, or maybe even a classroom that offers a unique learning opportunity for students in high-achieving classrooms, or differentiated environments.
We have many, many different learning interventions available here, and we also have talent development, which really hits the needs of all of our learners at school.
Our media program is constantly changing. It's heading in an exciting direction. Beyond our diverse collection, we have mini technologies and manipulators for teacher use. But I would say what really makes that all come together is that we have a staff and community that is willing to use those tools to empower our learners in engaging in inspiring ways.
Oak Hill Proud!
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 Was there any questions from the school board this evening?
Questions? Bruce?
Couple of observations. First of all, I'm just so impressed every week with the quality of the videos and the AV that comes forth. You can tell your great stories in such great visual ways that weren't able to be told just not too long ago. So, this doesn't get done just overnight, and it's obvious. I want to ask you if you could just, you started out, Mike, talking about your achievements, and rightfully proud of the gains you've made, and then you referenced STAR data, and you said that you're going to go back into the STAR data and examine it in other ways now to see how that can help. Can you just give a little primer again on what STAR data is, and how it's used, and a flavor of how you use it to make other gains?
What's changed for Oak Hill this year is that we've started co-teaching, and with the STAR data being utilized, usually as a benchmark data for reading and math, three times a year. This year, we've had the opportunity with our classrooms that are co-teaching to be progress monitoring them monthly. And when we were looking at that, we had the realization that with working with our co-teaching consultant that comes in and works with each of the schools that have co-teaching, that if we're really going to do some catch-up in closing that achievement gap, that we have to have a new goal of not only just a year's worth of growth, but a year-and-a-half worth of growth. So, we reexamine on how we're doing that, and during teacher talks this year, that was one of my main focuses. So, I've tried to bring it just beyond from being those classrooms that were doing co-teaching, but apply it to all the classrooms. Does that help answer your question?
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You bet. Any other questions?
Jerry.
Jerry.
I too was really impressed with the graphics. I mean, you do that yourself?
Thank Mr. Land and Mr. Frost.
Who provides that support?
Mr. Land and Mr. Frost.
All right. Well, good job. I'm really interested in the, although at times I found myself getting a little dizzy as the thing rotated around, but it was really nice. I'm interested in that group of kids that's growing a year-and-a-half per year, and it's not a few, it's a bunch of them. And I'm wondering, and I suppose some of them are growing a year-and-a-half from being substantially behind, so their year-and-a-half is catching, starting to catch them up, to even with what we would call grade level, and some of them may be already a little ahead in their, but I'm wondering, for the ones that maybe are coming to us behind, what's going to happen to them this summer? Have you kind of been watching that? Do, because there's a lot of evidence that the kids that come to us behind, or come to schools behind, if they, if they make some progress, then they maybe lose some over the summer. And do you have any plans for these, these kids that are, to hang on to the gains that you've been making?
At Oak Hill, we've been fortunate enough to implement a targeted services program that goes two nights a week, and many of those staying children that we're talking about that are making medium-to-high growth also participate in targeted services. Upwards of 50 to 60 students in grades 2, 3, and 4 do, and they're identified as having some of those similar characteristics. During summer school, I think Ms. King or Assistant Superintendent Bay should probably do a better job of explaining what will happen during targeted services. I know that this morning, we did talk about it as a principals' group, and how the first two weeks, we'll, we'll be looking at some of these students who have had medium-to-high growth, and then during the last three weeks of summer school, we're going to be working on accelerating and getting them ready even further for this coming school year.
Because if they're doing a year-and-a-half growth in a year, they're no slouches up here.
No, absolutely not.
They got behind, if they came to you behind for some other reason, and it means, probably, that they're capable of, if we would invest in them in the summer and in the next year and so on, that they're probably capable of just keeping on with that.
I would agree with you, Mr. Frost.
All right. Thank you.
And you're seeing accelerated growth across all levels also, are you not?
That's correct.
Even through the top levels of the school that are in talent development, they're growing at that same pace?
But I would caution that I'm still looking to even improve those numbers, that when I see 57% of our students making accelerated growth, I would hope we would even improve on that.
Jeff?
Hey, Mike. Just one simple question.
Yes?
You said 50 to 60 kids over the summer?
No, 50 to 60 kids right now are participating in our targeted services program. That's an after-school program that goes from 2:15 to 4:15 on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
How many do we have at Oak Hill over the summer?
It fluctuates every year. It's always been over 100, but each year, it can change just, it can fluctuate probably between 20 and 30 from that 100 mark. I think I've had upwards of 140 years back. This previous year was about 110.
What's the identified barriers to get that to 300?
Could you repeat that question?
How can we get more kids in the summer?
Oh.
What's stopping us? Besides finances? Anything else?
I think looking at and examining the schedules that we'd be implementing, and I think we're doing that, and the Teaching and Learning Department is doing that, to see how we can incorporate ensuring that students are coming in August, I think is going to be very helpful, because a lot of families, as you know, are going to have done with their vacations and sports and activities. I think that will be helpful for those three weeks where we're looking to accelerate and get them ready for their coming school year. But beyond that, it truly is, becomes a transportation issue for some of our families. It becomes an activities that they have going on elsewhere within their family lives. That's usually the biggest impediment.
I thought that's where you were going with it. Is there a way to bring the education to them?
Well, again, I think, I think Ms. King would do a better job of responding to the outside satellite programs that we've done this past year. Oak Hill did not participate in that, but other elementary schools did, and we were interested in working with the YES Network. For last year, that just did not come together. But that would be one of the, one of the ways that you certainly could do that, thus increasing the likelihood that those students would join day in, day out, in those targeted services activities during the summer.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Shannon?
The after-school targeted services, is there transportation at the end of the day, then, at 4:00, or do parents need to pick their students up?
At Oak Hill, we do provide transportation for students to get home. At Oak Hill, we do provide transportation for students to get home. Bruce?
Mike, great reporting and great job at Oak Hill. My question also deals with after-school, it's the after-school activities program. If, if I understood you correctly, were you saying that the academic achievement, uh, activities, Knowledge Bowl, USTA, and several others are after-school programs?
Those would all be after-school programs for the most part. That's correct.
But yet you had a hundred and sixty students involved in those programs?
That is correct.
Yeah, which is excellent. And how do you fund those programs?
For Knowledge Bowl and the United States Academic Triathlon, we do have a separate stipend for those students, or for those teachers that are facilitating those programs. What you're more likely to see, and I know that you received a packet regarding our data, what you're more likely often than not seeing is that our children are getting transported to those activities, but our parents are picking them up from those activities. The Geography B, there are some, there's some after-school part of it, but a lot of that does occur during the school day, especially the Geography B part, which Superintendent Jett has come and been a judge for along with the Spelling B. But especially the knowledgeable part, or the knowledgeable activity and the United States Academic Triathlon, in order to increase our participat, participation in that, we really have to look at different forms of transportation for those families who may not have it.
So you're saying the, the expenses for those programs are pretty negligible right now?
Correct.
But if you were to expand the numbers, transportation would have to be part of the formula for?
As I've worked with my leadership team and talked about that, that is what we see as the greatest impediment. Especially on a Friday evening at a United States Academic Triathlon meet, which may go till seven or seven-thirty, some of our families would not be able to pick their children up, even though they would value the experience greatly.
Thanks.
Mr. Superintendent?
First and foremost. Thank you, Mike. All of our sites, all of our elementary schools, all of our sites throughout the district have unique learning opportunities or learning communities. And Oak Hill is, we all just sat and listened to the presentation, listened to Mike, it's fast-paced, it's quick-changing, and it's a quick-change setting, and I think we also could see that through the presentation and through the data that we've all been examining. One of the things I want to make sure I say is Principal Vard is doing a masterful job, not just in my eyes or cabinet-level eyes, but if you go and ask that question throughout the Oak Hill community, and I'm talking about staff, I'm talking about parents, I'm talking about students, and more importantly, community partners, it's a resounding yes that Principal Vard is handling it and handling it well. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.